Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, 6:00 PM. City Council, Chambers, Fifth Floor. Item one. Item two is to discuss and consider initial findings of the SWOT analysis pathway for positive change to professional consulting. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. First, I'd like to thank you all for calling this special session. I know this is an awful week for you, and you guys give a lot to the city already. So, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're here to present the initial findings and SWOT analysis for the city of Odessa. Our agenda tonight is to provide a brief overview of our process, research methods utilized. The initial findings and SWOT analysis were completed to this point, along with next steps. We'll talk briefly about the benchmark and triometrics assessment, project update around personnel, and then questions and answers. So, the process to date, it's a three-phase process. So, phase one is a comprehensive evaluation and assessment of the organization, followed by phase two, diagnostic meetings with internal and external stakeholders, and then phase three, which is a SWOT analysis, recruitment and selection of your CEM, training evolutions, as well as system and process improvements. Now, I want to note that these don't move in chronological orders, that they can overlap and they can run concurrent at the same time. So, as an example, as we were completing phase one, we began our interviews as we gained data, and you're actually seeing that we're delivering a phase three item tonight.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, I'd like to go over basically how we worked through this data gathering process and actually conducted our comprehensive analysis. So, the first thing that we did is we obtained some raw data from the city human resources department, and we analyzed that. We also fully reviewed the currently issued policy and procedures manual. We conducted a qualitative and quantitative survey that was issued to all city personnel, and then we conducted interviews and focus groups with both internal and external stakeholders. And the reason that we engage in all of these different research methods is to ensure that the data that we're getting is the same across all of them, so we can identify what those trends are, not any individual outliers. And that's the best practice certainly in conducting this kind of research and analyzing organizations. So, the first thing that we'll go over is employee separation, turnover, and hiring. This is from that raw data that we obtained from the human resources department. So, there's a lot of data on this slide, and a couple of things to note. One, the human resources information system, the electronic database that tracks all the records related to employees was changed at some point in time in 2019. And Mr. Charles Hurst, the director of HR, was hired in 2020. This limits the availability of electronic data to analyze. However, we know for sure that since October 12th of 2018, there are 331 employees, that we have accurate data in terms of their separation date, as well as their reason for leaving the city. And we'll go into more detail on that later. So, this chart shows four years, 19, 20, 21, and 22, and the rate of separations from the city during those years. The gray line is from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it represents hundreds of thousands of people employed in oil and gas extraction. So, what you see there are a couple of things. One, in 19 and 20, there were higher numbers of overall separations from the city. In 20 and 21, there were lower numbers. What you see with the line on the competitive workforce from oil and gas is that it's correlated. So, whenever those high-paying jobs are frequently available, more folks will leave the city in potential favor of that. Whenever they're not as competitive, more folks are sticking around. One of the things that we had heard, that we were kind of asked to look into, was that there was potentially this mass exodus occurring in this January, and the data just don't support that. What this table shows is the January numbers from the last five years. And as you'll see, the number of people that voluntarily left the city this January is exactly the same as last January. Three more individuals chose to retire, but of course, they were eligible for retirement. In addition, this pie chart shows turnover since November 7th of 2022, and this is actually really positive news overall for the city of Odessa. Fifty-one employees have been hired. HR has been working very hard, of course, to make that happen, and only 16 employees separated. So, turnover is low, hiring is high. This reflects positive vibes in the workforce, that folks are willing to come to work for the city of Odessa, and the city is willing to hire them. So, that's positive. This chart breaks down the tenure of all employees in the city. So, in general, you have a pretty young workforce, and about a third of all city staff have less than three years of experience. So, remember that 314 number as we proceed through. You've got 35, 27, and 20 employees over on the tail end of the chart there. All of those folks are eligible to retire, but they provide a wealth of wisdom and knowledge to share with the younger workforce, and they're excited to do that. So, now we'll go into some of the quantitative findings from our actual survey. All of that was an analysis of raw data. We issued the survey to all 891 current employees, and we received back 482 responses. That's a 54% overall response rate. From the literature, and we cited that study there, the average survey response rate for similar-type surveys is 30%. So, we blew that out of the water and achieved a really fantastic overall response rate, which indicates a couple of things. One, it shows that folks were willing to engage in this process and trusted the anonymous and confidential nature of being able to report their results. So, that's very positive. And in addition to that, something that the scientific literature also tells us is if we unnaturally prolong the survey process to try and get even more responses, that can actually introduce some problems. So, ultimately, we can be really confident that the data that we've collected is an overall very good representation of the entire workforce.
Okay. So, in the assessment and with the surveys, you know, our goal is if we can identify prominent hotspots, then we can focus on those hotspots and apply leverage, resources, and strategies to impact those, to facilitate a quicker change of direction, so that we can start to move an organization on a positive trajectory. So, the first hotspot identified was patterns, practices, trust, leadership, and morale. So, we looked at several areas in the organization, and, you know, I'd like to point out that these numbers are going to be presented in percentages of responses. The blue bars are those that agree. The orange are those that are undecided or disagree. So, we first looked at work unit dynamics, and at glance, you can say, okay, that's not really bad. But when we're talking about the human system of an organization, and how we interact, or how the leader is perceived to care about employees, or coworkers care about themselves, or how easy is it to report a problem, or go to someone with a problem, and how their team work together, all of that is significant. So, if I'm taking a math test, I might be happy with an 80 if it's a course that I've struggled with. However, when we're dealing with motivating people, just imagine if we can raise that 10 points, how your people can be inspired, and how that translates into the service in the community.
Let me ask a question right there.
Sure.
Go back on that slide. So, we're seeing leaders care for team members 84%, then we go coworkers for each other 83, 79, 80, 84. On average, when you see this type of study, where is it that you want to be as an organization? In that, and right there, let's start with leader cares throughout. Is 84? Where does that put us?
Well, it's going to be relative to the organization. I mean, so every organization is going to be different. And I want to qualify that a lot of these responses, you're going to see some correlation to the different areas. So, none of this is here to say that you have bad people. It's just what can we do to enhance the ability to lead? You know, is it a training issue? Is it an engagement issue? Is it, you know, we have people in roles that just don't know what they don't know because they've not been coached, counseled, mentored to grow within the organization? One, you know, one thing that I'll share with you right now, one of the biggest detractions with the city right now is that you don't have a unifying mission or vision. You have 30 different departments doing things 30 different ways, and there is not a unifying vision for the city that tells them all, here's how we come together to achieve the mission of the city of Odessa and serving our community. You do have one. We found it. It took us about three months, and it was sitting on a shelf, but no one that we interviewed knew what the mission statement was.
So, there's no overall mission statement for the city?
Correct.
So, basically, is we have silos?
Yes, sir.
That basically are working, where they should be working together, working against each other, pulling in 30 different directions. But there are, from what I understand, isn't there mission statements or some type of statement within the department?
Correct. Yeah. Many of your departments have their own mission or their own vision, which is great. But if we don't know how that feeds into the overall mission of the city, you know, that becomes a problem, because we don't have a roadmap. You know, we don't know how the mission of, say, your police department plays into the overall mission set forth by council and executive leadership, which is designed to survive your terms, so that when you go through transitions, or you go through new leaders coming in into a play, there is no consistent document to say, this is where we're going, and this is how we can stay on track.
So, there's been no communication to everyone in the organization? What are our goals and where we want to be, whether it's five years, 10 years, 20 years?
Not that we found or that was communicated to us. Another area that we looked at was leadership, management, supervision, and training dynamics. This is important, because this talks about how the employee feels, are they receiving the resources they need to perform well in their job? One area that we looked at is, are they receiving the coaching and counseling that they need to advance in their career? That's important. If a person's not receiving this, then they're not going to aspire to move up through the city. So, when another opportunity comes forward, maybe at the same amount of money, but a different environment or different training opportunities, they may leave, or if there's more money attached to it. So, the second is, you know, are you receiving the training you need to perform well in your job? You know, what kind of goals and objectives are they clear? And then lastly, is their perception of how their leader uses reinforcements, you can also call those rewards or recognition, and punishment, and if it's being used effectively. And when we see this response, whether it's real or it's perceived, there's a sense of unfairness.
And as one quick point of clarification, the leader sets goals and objectives there. That may be within that individual working unit or the individual department. And that's obviously good, that 73% are, but what we don't know for sure is that the leader of this department sets goals and objectives that align with an overall mission that are the same as another department over here, and that can create that unnecessary competition.
Right. And the biggest concern about silos and that competition is that we turn people into, you know, they should be teammates, working across to achieve a mission, but now they start to battle one another because of functions, because they focus on, well, that's not my job, I'm going to focus on this. And when you look at the function of a city, there's a lot of overlapping when we're talking about overall quality of life for our community. The next area we looked at is we wanted some feedback on how they view their focal leader behaviors. Now, let me define focal leader. We're talking about the one-up leader, the direct supervisor. You know, so you can see how they rated competency. You know, are they willing to admit to mistakes? Are they seeking input from followers? Are they acting on that advice? And do they walk the talk? And all of this, again, can go back to, we only know what we know, and can be addressed through training and engagement and coaching and mentoring programs within the organization. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have a bad leader in a particular role. We looked at team atmosphere and communication, and this is another considerable area. And as you can see, we're in the 60 range, we're in the low 70s across, and, you know, we're asking, how do they view their leader? Are they viewed as a role model? Is a leader leading from the front? And what we mean is, it's real easy to join in the successes, but are they also joining in when we're not successful? Or are they sharing in the hardships with their people? Or are they viewed as doing as such? How does a leader communicate? Are they communicating frequently? And this speaks directly to leadership engagement. And here's an important note about leadership engagement. Short of a clear mission and vision statement, if you want to keep your team motivated and on track, that leader has to constantly be engaging their teams to do that. That's why we have mission and vision statements, because it's impossible for a leader to spend 100% of their time engaging with their team members. So, they have to have a guiding document in order to help them make decisions and to inspire and motivate them. You know, are team members able to reach full potential? What I want you to notice is that there's a component under, you know, my team is effectively serving the citizens, and we pose this question, at what cost? Because, you know, they're rating the work that they're doing as very effective, and I believe that they're being honest with this. But there's a lot of stress that comes from silos, that comes from poor communication, that comes from lack of training, that comes from lack of coaching and counseling. If they don't feel they're being appropriately prepared to provide these services, they're having to work harder, and that also creates frustration. So, those frustrations continue to build and build and build, and it turns into resentment. You know, it's a mirror effect, because what they start to see internally, that's what they start to exert externally to our community. There's also a term, it's called the law of exposure, and it's effectively whatever people are exposed to. That's why if you're exposed to toxicity, and you're around it all day, every day, people will start to exhibit those behaviors. If you're around bullies all day, every day, people will start to exhibit that behavior in the organization. We looked at the team and unit relationship to the overall organization, you know, and the one that I really want to focus on is the team's confidence that their leader is using influence to achieve individual, group, and organizational goals that are focused on better serving the city of Odessa. And you can see where their responses are. So, we look at all of this, and then we see the morale level rating. You can see about 55%. They're rating morale at high or very high. You have just under 30% rating it moderate, which means they're there on the offense. It's easy for us to claim or to assume that morale is impacted by a single event, but that's just not true. Not when we look at the data that we received in the surveys, when we look at the, you know, people are actively asking for training, for engagement, for better communication, and we'll talk more about that in the later presentation. So, you've heard me talk about motivation. Well, motivation and/or trust is going to drive performance one way or the other, and it's also going to drive job satisfaction. So, when motivation and trust are high, there's a dividend, because speed is high in the completion of projects and cost is low. That's one of the reasons we look at performance across individuals and teams. That's not the only way that we measure if a team is effective, but that's one data point, because all things being equal, same level of experience, same level of staffing, but we're getting two different outputs, one's performing at a higher level than the other, then that can lead us to start asking some questions. Is it a knowledge, skill, or ability question? Or is it a motivation question? You know, is it possibly a leadership issue? We don't know. But that at least kind of raises a red flag to say, hey, something may be awry. And that's where intelligence-led approaches or data-driven approaches are very valuable in organizations. A lot of city governments are transitioning to that type of decision-making. But if it's low, if motivation is low, then performance is going to be low, and job satisfaction is going to be low. Same with trust. If it's low, speed is slow, and cost is high, and we pay a tax. So, projects start to extend out, or we start to see other unfunded liabilities play out. At the bottom line, it costs us money. For a general government team member on the general government side of operations, it's about one-third of annual salary. So, we just did some easy math to kind of show you how that plays out. Now, I want to make one caveat. When we're looking at public safety, specifically police and fire, determining on who they're recruiting to fill those vacancies, if they're bringing in a lateral, it's not going to be as much, but there's still cost. But if it's a person that has no training, they're not certified, and they're having to put them through the academies and the other appropriate training courses, and then you have field training, by the time they become a contributing member of the organization, which means one body counts on a shift, you're going to spend anywhere from $100,000 to $120,000. So, just some points of reference.
All right. Transitioning over into the other hotspot, this is toxicity related to discrimination and harassment. So, one of the questions that we asked was how frequently employees observe racial, racist, or sexually offensive material or behavior?
Are these individuals or these percentages?
Those are raw numbers, individuals. So, you got huge green bars, that's very good. The problem is, is that on the left side there, you've got 48, 9, and 6, so around 60 individuals that are saying yes, they see racist material or behavior exhibited. Then on the other side, you've got sexually offensive material or behavior that is exhibited by around 50 or so folks are reporting that. Those are potential claims, and pretty concerning information.
Go back there.
Yes, sir.
Go back to that one. Okay. So, let's understand this. Yes, once in a while, 48 individuals, once in a while, whether it's a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly, or annually, are experiencing some type of racial offensive material on the job site?
That's what they reported. Yes, sir.
And then 9%?
Nine people.
Nine people.
Reported frequently.
And then 6?
Reported very frequently.
And so, when we go to 37, now we're going to sexual offenses?
Correct.
Materials and behavior exhibit, 37, 8 to 5. Is that 5 saying that they're reporting some type of sexual offensive by a touch, a view, or is... Explain that. Is it how it's perceived? Does the data show that it's actually happening?
Yes, sir. So, what this specific question asked was, how often have you seen sexually offensive material or behavior? So, that might be a third party watching two other individuals, or whether that be consensual or be non-consensual or whatever, but it's what they have seen, or it could be happening to them. The next slide that we're about to be over asks about direct experiences, and so that'll shed some additional light. In this slide here, we asked about, in the last 12 months, how often have you experienced discrimination based upon race, religion, gender, sex, or national origin, and then also about sexual harassment? Of note on sexual harassment, you know, sexual harassment by almost all policies in the law is defined as unwanted, unwelcomed behavior. So, you know, if somebody's giving somebody a massage, and they like that, and that doesn't bother them, then that's not sexual harassment for that particular individual. But all of these numbers, 13, 6, 4, 8, and then particularly that 4 over there, those are potential claims, representing significant risk to the city.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, when y'all were doing this data, or talking to the employees, or doing the survey, did at any time it come out how old these policies and procedures are? Are we current, up to date with policy and procedures, and what an employee should do if this is happening?
You're not current, and we will cover that. Yes, ma'am. So, when you also couple that with this finding on the pie graph, what this question was, okay, so if you did experience some form of harassment or discrimination, would you feel comfortable reporting that to your chain of command? We got a great response for yes, 91%, 433 people, but 45 people said no. So, imagine what that causes. That really causes a Y in the road. They're going to do one of two things if they're experiencing this. One is suppress it and just continue working. That is obviously going to make their work-life difficult and problematic. The other piece is if they're not willing to report it to their chain of command, which is their lifeline, to try and get it stopped and resolved, they may report that to the EEOC, they may report that to an attorney, they may report it to the news media, or whatever, all of which are very negative outcomes for the city. So, we need to address that. So, this, Ms. Warner, I'm going to answer your question directly. In risk management, the field of risk management, there are gray rhinos and black swans. Black swans are the unknown unknowns, the things that you can't predict, that you don't know are coming, and you really don't know what to do about. And then you have the gray rhinos. They're the big, ugly, angry beasts that are running at you, and you know that if you don't get out of the way, something bad is going to happen. What we're dealing with are gray rhinos. They are not black swans. We can see it, we can identify it, and the good news is, and there is good news, we can fix it. So, the currently issued policies and procedures manual that we have received was last updated in 2008. The manual never mentions sexual orientation, gender, or gender identity.
Mike, let me ask a question before you do that.
Yes, sir.
So, the PMP manual was updated in 2008?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Previous 2008. What was the last time before that that happened? Do you have any added information?
We saw 2002 referenced on some of the policies.
So, you went six years, and the city saw a need to be able to bring it up to current 2008?
There are a few revisions that were even in 2007, but some, their last revision date was 1999, for example, but the absolute latest was in 2008.
But in 2008, that thing was put on the shelf, it was never looked at.
So, we're not even compliant with the law?
That's correct.
What about training?
So, with regard to training, we were able to confirm that formal harassment, discrimination training last occurred pre-COVID. There has been some release of some computer programs, you know, computer courses that folks presented. However, one of the individual employees remarked that the way that program works is you hit play, and you come back when it's over, and you're good to go. So, there are some very significant training deficiencies there.
So, this too also will lead to some type of exposure and liability?
Absolutely. If, you know, if you have a claim, exhibit one, if that goes to trial, is going to be the policy and procedure manual. Is it current? Does it say that this activity is prohibited, like it should? Then the second exhibit after that that would be used as evidence or training records? When was the training conducted? What was included? And that's a problem. Yes, sir. So, the very good news is that, you know, we're able to work quickly, and through Mr. Bernal's leadership and Mr. Hurst, we recommended that the city of Odessa contact a gentleman by the name of Mike Mararchi with the Mararchi Management Group. Mr. Mararchi is nationally renowned for his work in employee relations, and specifically policy manuals, and ensuring that both policy manuals and all formal leaders in the organization are trained in how to address this. And I received confirmation today that Mr. Mararchi was officially engaged to get the city of Odessa's policy manual up to date, and he will be able to do that very quickly, probably before the end of April, and maybe even sooner than that. So, that's fantastic.
Can you give us an example of what is outdated and what is not in the PMP? Just a small blurb.
Yes, sir. So, there are specifically identified protected classes that must be listed in any kind of discrimination.
Give us an example of a protected class.
Protected class, race, sex, national origin, veteran status. Those are some of the legally required protected statuses. And then in addition to that, other laws have been passed that require there to be mentioned, and policies related to sexual orientation, gender, and gender identity. This has nothing to do with right and left politics, conservatism, or liberalism. This is the law.
These are federal laws?
Correct. And case law related to it as well. So, costs related to these issues, when Mike went through all the bar graphs before, and he talked about leader behaviors and trust and all of that, basically for the orange graphs, okay, the not positive responses, think about that as instability, right? Coming to work in a place where you're not excited to come to work at, okay? Those costs, per this study, are about $14,000 per employee per year. That comes into effect from lost productivity, people calling in, overtime, having to be paid to fill those positions, and then just general turnover. If someone files an EEOC claim, on average, that costs $125,000 to defend. Obviously, if there's a negative judgment... Obviously, if there's a negative judgment against the city, then those costs go up. But again, good news, human resources can and is actively working to fix a lot of this. And that can prevent lawsuits and claims, and also facilitate that positive work environment that we're working for. So now we'll shift into the qualitative survey results. So this is where we asked people open-ended questions, and they were able to give us some more rich data. We asked four questions, as a follower, what can I do to improve to reach the mission and vision of the city? What can Odessa do to improve? How can my team improve? How can my focal leader improve? These crazy graphics that you see on the screen are called word clouds. And the way that that works is you take all the responses, you pop them into the computer, and the computer spits out an image that reflects how often certain words were mentioned. And then in addition to that, we certainly went through and actually read these responses and allies in that way. There are really four major themes that were brought up, communication being a big one. Both internally and externally, there's a request for communication to improve across the city. Training, the folks are hungry for training, they need that. Compensation, competitive benefits were certainly mentioned, and that's something that we need to address. And then accountability. The easiest way to upset a good employee is to tolerate a bad one. And there are a ton of comments in our survey about folks wanting to know what are the expectations? They want to see policies and mechanisms of reward, recognition, and discipline when needed applied equitably across the organization. Here are just a couple of sample comments that we highlighted, you know, clearly define expectations, be more forthcoming about changes before they happen as it relates to communication, better leadership from the top, stop rewarding favorites, give everybody the same choices, and then again, another comment about accountability. And then also, this is the last piece of our data that we collected, these are from our interviews and focus groups. And so what we've got here are just a couple of sample statements that were made. So the first longer bullet there, that's from a chamber member, that says he or she wants to see change. The previous city manager had been there for about twenty years, although not in the position of city manager, and he was always present for questions, but I've not seen much change or progress. I think it deserves better. We work with business owners every day, a lot of feedback that we received is that it's a lot easier to do business in Midland compared to Odessa. A lot of discussions there around getting permits and some of the hoops that folks have to jump through. Thirty different departments, thirty different ways of doing business. That was quoted from a single person, but then also reiterated really across the board from employees as well as department directors. And then this last piece, so last time the city was thriving, people wanted to go to work. The political aspect of the job has changed a lot since I've been here. This was a pretty tenured employee. We have another election in one and a half years, so who knows if it's going to change? Folks, what that is saying is that there's not that long-term vision. And they're just nervous that in the next election cycle, are things going to get turned upside down? We need to work on a strategic plan and vision that will outlast, as we discussed. Diagnostic statements related to toxicity and discrimination. The first one, ladies, I'm sorry, but this was a statement that was made. No women, and this was on our team, because it never really worked out well, because they always wanted to play that card. This is a training issue for sure, and a tolerance issue for sure. We'll talk about willful blindness later on. I know some of my coworkers would not feel comfortable telling their supervisor if they were discriminated against. And again, our data also supports that. So trends in SWOT analysis. Again, we are looking for what's common between all the data that we collected. And when you look at the research literature, there are a few places where negative findings can be sourced to. Poor policy supervision, working conditions, difficult relations with coworkers or supervisors, perceived or truly non-competitive compensation packages, and the absence of appropriate reward, discipline mechanisms. Our research showed some significant communication deficits, both internal and external. The good news, again, being that by updating the policy and procedure manual, conducting training across the organization, we can fix a lot of these issues. The workplace atmosphere and good relations with workers are obviously of paramount importance, and that comes from the literature as well.
All right, so when it comes to the SWOT analysis, I'm really going to lean heavy on strengths and opportunities. We've highlighted pretty much all of the weaknesses and threats. And this is really good news, but as we look at this, you need to look at everything as an opportunity. So, under strengths, you have coachable talent, but they're in need of mentoring, and they're hungry for positive change. You have high levels of institutional knowledge in your organization, and they're more than willing to work with your young team members and share their knowledge, skills, and abilities and that institutional knowledge with them to help bring them along. The search for a new city manager is outstanding because it brings fresh eyes, new processes, new procedures to the organization that maybe you had never considered. You have a passionate community, and they're open, and they're ready for a change. And all of you on council are passionate, and you want what's best for Odessa. You know, there is no doubt about that. Internal leaders, they stand ready to lead, as evidenced by, you know, the individuals that have stepped into interim roles, and those are all amazing things. Just a few areas that I want to highlight, and this is just echoing from the weaknesses, is the promotional process. Now whether this is perceived or real, it's viewed as unfair. We heard comments that certain people were selected for certain roles based on how they looked, or that they weren't selected based on how they looked, which is significant, all things being considered. And if that's just a perception, we need to work to change that.
And these were comments on the quantitative survey?
Yes sir, not on the qualitative, in the diagnostic.
In the diagnostic?
Yes sir.
So whether they're real or perceived?
It's how they feel.
This is how they feel?
Yes. You know, another area, Mike had mentioned willful blindness. When trust is not there, evidenced by, you know, almost ten percent, not willing to report discrimination and harassment through the chain of command, or maybe they experienced a negative outcome when they reported it in the past, what they're going to do is they're going to repress because they don't want to go through that situation again. But they need the job, maybe their spouse is working in the old field, they don't want to move the kids out of school, they need the benefits, or whatever. So that's where we start to see willful blindness. And some people, you know, describe this as see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil. And whether it's occurring to them or they see it within the workplace.
How does that willful blindness correlate with the comment that Mike had said about women when you apologize something? Go back.
Oh, on the women playing the card in the workplace?
Yeah, what does that mean? I mean, can anybody interpret, because I'm not really sure, but what does that actually mean?
Yeah, so exactly, I'll put some context on that comment. So the comment was, the particular individual that we were talking with in that department, it would be a predominantly male field. And so as we had a discussion, the individual brought up some previous female workers. And so we asked, how did that go? And to what degree are you open to a female serving in this role? And the comment that was made was it doesn't really work well with women because they always play that card. What the individual was meaning is that they are requesting different kinds of treatment, different standards to be held to because they are women. That's what the individual was referring to. The same individual also went into stories about working with someone that was, had to be gay, and making a lot of jokes in the workplace around sexual orientation. And when they found that out, then they had to take some steps to work through that, that they were working with someone that was gay. So, that's the willful blindness, that that was allowed until such time as they realized that one of their team members was gay, and then it became not appropriate. Well, how do you think that makes the gay person feel?
But the thing is, is because our personnel policies that's in place, they're outdated, we have no way to be able to handle it. Am I correct in that, or am I incorrect in that?
It certainly makes it more difficult.
Makes it difficult.
Absolutely. It makes it more difficult because there is currently no policy that says you can't do that. Now, certainly supervisors could take action and lay out expectations and so forth, and the law supports that. But from a claim standpoint, there, somebody that's bringing forth a complaint is going to say the current manual does not prohibit this, so it's not important.
But how does a, as a director of any organization, of any department, not having the sufficient training, not having the PMP, how could they be able to lay out within their department that is a salvo currently to be able to address any of those specific items right now? Are we handicapped?
You bring up a very good point, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of other weaknesses, this is a big one, we've stressed it, and that's the unifying vision and mission for the city. If we don't have a roadmap, we're never going to get to where we want to go. And, you know, that sounds cliche, but that's the truth. And we really want to look at the lack of psychological safety and confidence in the chain of command. This is important, because when psychological safety is low, people don't feel valued. You know, they don't feel that they have a voice. They don't feel engaged, and they don't feel seen. And those are significant areas to consider because of the amount of time we come and we stay in the workplace. Typically, on average, it's about nine to ten hours we're in the workplace. Some of us are in the workplace more than we're at home. So, you know, this is something that's very important. Opportunities, now some of you might look at that first one and go, what? Internal conflict, that's an opportunity. Because if there's still conflict, that means that people are still engaged, they've not left the field. And to be honest with you, when you're experiencing change, whether it's change like what you're experiencing now or just we're changing shifts, we change shifts once a year, and people get to open bid, and they get to go wherever, you're going to deal with a level of conflict. Because conflict exists in three of the four levels of group formation or team formation. You've probably heard the phrases storming, or forming, storming, norming, and performing. Well, conflict is necessary as we identify roles, responsibilities, norms for the group, and as we work to build cohesion, so that's a strength. Your lack of training is a strength. Imagine the good work that a lot of your folks are doing. You know, just some recent, you know, shout-outs over the freeze. Folks out repairing water lines, you never lost water service, am I correct? The work of your waste workers coming in to expend that discretionary effort to make sure that trash collection was achieved. What your first responders are doing day in and day out, you know, the process that everybody in this city, you know, engage in, we love to see that discretionary effort, and that shows that within the city, you may have pockets of people where motivation is high. Because that's typically what you see. But imagine if we properly equipped them with the right type of training, if we properly coached and counseled them, if we lined them up with a mentoring program, just how much better it could be. And how much better they can serve the community. Employees are starting to speak up and speak out. There is a strong desire for change in the city. We have identified these two primary hotspots. So that means now that we know it, we can start applying strategies and resources to address it for the maximum effect, which is the workplace environment. You have up-and-coming leaders, but they need mentoring, and they need coaching, they need developing. You have an opportunity to reset the clock with the new city manager, to come in and say, we're done operating like this, we have a new vision, we have a new direction, and we're ready to go. And you lay out that map. And the big one, opportunity to reengage and reset the clock with how we communicate with our community and work to build trust with those community stakeholders. Threats, big one, and these are, they coincide, they're kind of married at the hip, is your lack of trust and low morale. You know, those are big. You know, along with, you see poor leadership listed, it's not because you have bad people in those roles. It's because they've not been developed. They've not been mentored. They don't know what they don't know, in absence of training, what do we rely upon? Either what we've experienced in the past, or we fly by the seat of our pants. So, even though that's a threat, that's also a significant opportunity for you. You know, the potential sexual harassment claims, discrimination claims, and the lawsuits that come with that. So the work that's been completed to this point, and you can see on your screen, the policy review, the organizational survey assessment, diagnostic interviews are going to be ongoing. There's actually two uses for those, one is to gather information, but it's also to assess progress as we continue to go through the program. Executive coaching and advising, to be that sounding board, that's been ongoing. Preparing the executive leadership for that psychological transformation that comes with new leaders, because there are emotional responses anytime we go through change. It may be fear, it may be anxiety, it may be frustration, it may be rage, and depending on how our body processes that, can lead to certain types of behavior. So it's important that your department directors, you know, are keenly on top of that, and they manage with their folks through that change. Leadership processes and tools, those are ongoing, just finding new ways to facilitate information. One is, one area that's under review is creating that confidential system. A lot of comments about members of the city not being good stewards of information, and that plays into psychological safety. And that plays into whether a person is going to go through that chain of command to report a problem. Because if they don't think that you're going to be a good steward of their information and look out for their best interests, they're not going to engage that process. So I know quite a few departments in the city has held, we call them reset the clock sessions with their staff to reassert the need to keep information that needs to be confidential, especially around our team members, confidential. Benchmarking and recruiting, you know, we kicked that off last week, and we'll get members tonight hopefully. And the last section is under leadership training around transition. So, the one area that we'll utilize to kick this thing off would be culture and communication. And that's not talking about creating your mission and your vision statement for you. But what culture do we need to facilitate within our teams to promote exhaustive communication? To make sure that people feel valued, to make sure that people feel seen, and that they're recognized in a positive way for the diversity that they bring to the organization, then how we can effectively communicate around that. We could also talk about, and we do, is that we can communicate through conflict without casualties, which means we're not always going to agree, but there's a way where we can disagree while still treating others with dignity and respect to ensure that, you know, points are made without, you know, people walking away wounded, because that carries a lasting effect in your organization. The basic social media, which was just a base level over some of the social media law that was already done back in January, and then we have three other modules, and you can see resilient leadership, the leadership resilience training, those are two different courses, and then you have your leadership transition and integration, which kind of takes your, this will focus on department directors, and number two is, it kind of takes them through what that psychological transformation is, and how it plays, how that stress plays and can play out through behavior, and how we can see, I call them crocodiles that are there, and the ones that we can identify, we can mitigate. But there always seems to be some under the surface, and when we run into those, how can we effectively navigate that?
Let me ask a quick question real quick, go back to that slide. Leadership transition training, basic social media training complete. Give me an example, what does that mean? Who was trained and what was completed on the basic social media?
The basic social media, so we asked anyone in the city that had access to social media. We met with them for about two hours back in, I believe it was January, at one of the annexes. And we just talked about the basic rules around social media. You know, so number one, they understand what it means to be that person in that role. You know, the tools or the setups to affirm that those tools and setups were in place in the- in their respective departments. What we learned in that was that a lot of the social media was centralized. Uh, you had, uh, PD had their own, own access, but you had a lot of other departments that went through one, one channel. But we wanted just to provide some basic information around, can you delete comments, or can you not? You know, can you do this, or can you not? Just to, uh, so we can mitigate any potential issues, especially as you go, as you go through transition, and how, you know, some topics may go out and be commented on.
Well, let me ask a question. In order to be able to formulate some type of, uh, social media policies within the organization, whether it's elected officials or the, uh, the employees, it has to go hand in hand with the PNP. You can't have social media policy when we have an outdated PNP. So, those have to go hand in hand to correlate where we're basically. Because that brings up, uh, First Amendment issues, things of that nature. And so, right now, we have a huge imbalance. You know, there's been external forces that have been pushing, trying for the city to adopt policies and to compare us to other entities of where we lack or were short. But the thing is, is that they have, they're ignorant in the institutional policies of what exists and doesn't exist. They fail to ask the question, you know, is there a personal policy that basically can address this issue and protect those First Amendment rights, but also allow people to be, have those First Amendment rights? So, am I incorrect to believe that, you know, those, these two things have to go hand in hand?
Absolutely. So a, a social media related policy needs to be in the overall city's policy and procedure manual. It does need to be there, yes sir.
So in, in the past, as for like 2008, if not forward, there is no policy. My question was always, how, how was justice, how was punishment mitigated? How was it brought down when someone violated social, show, social media, basically making a comment outside of work, and they were punished? And, and I asked that question because I didn't understand it. If we didn't have a policy in 2008, uh, 2000, until it was revised in 2008 or brought up to date, and yet these individuals were either suspended or dealt with, you know, does that cause liability? So right now, you know, if an individual made a comment, and it seemed to violate a code of conduct, because I think in, uh, personnel policy, currently around, there's a code of conduct of how employees are supposed to conduct themselves, of things that they can say, things that they can do, things that can engage. So was the city using that personnel policy in order to administer justice when they, they believed or perceived to be a violation, and the employee making a comment that could reflect badly on the city? I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna use examples, cause I wanna single anybody out in the past, but there are specific things that have happened in the past. So that too also opens up for, uh, for, uh, for any type of litigation. Question is, is that how far does that go? If someone was suspended or fired because they made a comment on their social media, and yet we had nothing in place, an outdated public policy, a personnel policy for the, for, for the, uh, for the employees, nothing for HR to, to navigate by, but yet decisions were made. How did we come to those conclusions? How did they make, how, if there's no training, how did the personnel be able to make a, a decision? How do they address it? So everybody is walking through this process blindly, or trying to make the best that they can. So where was, there was no guidance, so where, where do you go? And so, uh, am I wrong in that assessment, that that, that's a possibility that could happen or could occur if we do not make these changes?
All I can speak to with regard to that is how to move forward. And how to move forward is how you are, by getting that policy and procedure manual updated. Um, probably a lot of the comment, or their questions that you just asked would probably be better answered by Mr. Jones as the city's attorney in terms of what liability past decisions might have for the city. But I, I absolutely know that by fixing this through training and the personnel, uh, policy and procedure manual, you will mitigate that risk in the future. And I'm, I'm not at all trying to dodge your question, I just, we don't have that knowledge.
Okay, I, I, I'm just trying to ask, because the thing is, it goes back to a lot of things, you know, willful blindness, lack of trust.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's also a part where you're basically saying is that, uh, there were favorites. And also that there was, uh, uh, I, I guess basically no discipline. When someone made a violation, there was no discipline or lack of. So it, it goes back to a lot of the issues that you had placed in the previous slots.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, uh, just a quick refresher on the benchmark process and candidate evaluation. So hiring is full of risks. Uh, there's, there's a ton of literature out there. Any HR professional will tell you, there's, there's lots of ways that that can go wrong. We don't have a crystal ball. We can't foretell the future and say that John Doe is gonna be an amazing city manager because I can see what they're doing in the future. So we have to engage in different tactics to try and assess that. And so what we're trying to do primarily with the TriMetrix process and the benchmark process is to assess fit. Obviously, these two individuals don't fit in the car that they're in, but by going through our, uh, process, you can't see it, but that's a happy guy, uh, inside of a vehicle that he fits in. So we're, we're trying to find fit, and we're gonna use a little bit of a car analogy to help, uh, explain this. The benchmark committee, which our recommendation was, um, last week, that you consider two council members, two department directors, one from public safety, one from general government, and then two citizens, uh, representing the business aspect and the residential aspect. That's just a recommendation, you all are of course free to modify that however you like. But those members, whoever's gonna serve on that benchmark committee, the key piece for them is that they are vested in the success of the city manager position. And they're going to think about it as a subject matter expert. Okay, I'm a department director, what do I need? What am I looking for in that leader to perform? I'm a, a, a resident of this city, and what am I looking for in that leader to perform? And they're gonna go through a process called the Superior Performance Attributes, uh, process. And that's how we identify what those benchmark qualities are for the city manager. And then going through the TriMetrix compares all of our candidates to that ideal candidate profile. So think about going online and building a car, the way that you want it built, selecting all these options. At the end, you're, you always get, well, this dealership has that exact car that you want. Or this dealership has a car that meets 95% of what you're looking at, and you can make your decisions that way. This process helps remove bias, and it identifies what strengths those candidates bring to the table as well as any potential gaps, so that you can make the most informed decision. The TriMetrix is tri-modal. It assesses three primary areas. It starts out with horsepower, their, what's under the hood, what personal skills and talents they bring to the table. Very importantly, it assesses what drives them, their gas in the tank, their motivation, what their values are. When they get up in the morning, what makes them happy to go to work and lead? And then how we drive, stylistic issues, how they communicate, how they interact with their, with their folks. United States Department of Labor says that assessments in general should account for not more than 30% of an overall hiring process. So literally, just you've got applicant, and you issue an assessment, and if you were to make your decision entirely off of that, that's not what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to use some other pieces, but this is a very important piece. What are some of those other pieces? We look at roads traveled, to continue with the car analogy. What is their past experience and achievements? We look at where they're parked, what's their current situation, their culture, the results that they've produced, and their reasons for leaving, if they're leaving an organization. And finally, we look at the road ahead. What's their career trajectory, and how does the city of Odessa and the priorities that the benchmark sets fit with those, uh, with that career trajectory? So ultimately, our process that we use from TTI Success Institute, it's scientifically backed, it's legal, uh, it is supported by the EEOC, does it create a disparate impact? It's patented with multiple US patents, and it's field proven. Field proven not only from TTISI, but also field proven with T2 Consulting, uh, where we've used this process and produced some great results.
All right, so as we talk about man, maintaining deliverables, the integrity of the timeline that we communicated last week, and also the integrity of the process. The core tenets of T2 is obviously integrity, professionalism, and providing superb value to our clients. Uh, formerly, we had planned to engage Dr. Seitz, uh, who is certified and has been administering this, these assessments since 1999. However, some questions arose concerning his academic credentials. Uh, we honored those requests, and they were very valid, and we made a request for official documentation. We provided a deadline of 5:00 PM yesterday. He was not able to provide those by that point. Therefore, Dr. Seitz was removed from this project, and he was, um, replaced with another associate, uh, from our network, Susie Price. And Michael will introduce her to you.
So I'm super excited to tell you a little bit about Susie Price. Uh, she began working with TTI Success Institute in 2006. She's received two prestigious awards that reflect how she has used the tools that TTISI puts out to, uh, dramatically, uh, produce good results in the talent management field. They have conferred upon her the prestigious Advanced Master Axeologist Certification. What's, it's kinda some crazy words, but what's key about that is fewer than 30 people in the world have that level of training and certification. She is not only a practitioner, but she also trains people in how to conduct the benchmark process and issue and interpret these assessments. Uh, she trains folks in how to do the TriMetrix HD, Professional Motivators, and the Professional DISC Personality Tool that, uh, many folks may be familiar with. And then she has all of those listed, uh, TTISI certifications that are there. Uh, finally, she has served several significant clients, including Kimberly Clark Encore, the Douglas County Chamber, Kennesaw State University in Georgia, Gwinnett College in her local area. Uh, she's written two books, is a published author, and has been very civically engaged as well. So, uh, we're very happy to have her as part of our robust network with T2 Consulting and bring her on for this project.
So let me ask you a question, walk us through the TriMEX's deal. So it, it's a city, we come together, we put a committee, whatever that committee, uh, formation is.
Correct, so we need a benchmark committee for the first step. Um, if you recall, last week, we discussed, it would be ideal to get three views of the, uh, position, providing that all three views have a vested interest in the success of the position of city manager. Not an individual, but the position of city manager in the city of Odessa. So we recommended two council members to, um, we call them direct followers. So that would be department head, whoever answers directly to the city manager, and then, uh, two community members.
But the committee would be engaged, walk us through that process.
Okay, okay, so that process, the benchmarking process would involve a brainstorming session. Uh, so we would coordinate a virtual environment for that brainstorming session to occur that, uh, lasts about an hour to an hour and a half. Uh, as, um, Susie will take, uh, all of the benchmark committee members through a process to get them to focus strictly on the job. Not on personalities of people who have held the job before. We don't want folks to, you know, come in and say, "Well, so and so did this, we don't want that," um, et cetera, et cetera. It's solely to get the focus on the job and start to identify, you know, key accountabilities, key traits. Once that is complete, then, uh, the members will take about a, it's about a 40-minute assessment. Um, and that's, uh, and from that assessment, then those key traits and/or accountabilities are identified, they're weighted, and they're ranked, and that creates your benchmark report.
So I have a question, and I've been trying to wrap my brain around, uh, two citizens because all citizens matter. And so I don't know how you possibly pick out two citizens to be on this benchmark committee. I'm just throwing that out there.
Right. So I know last week, we discussed, you know, potentially council members, you know, bringing one or two candidates, uh, who they've spoken with, who, who, you know, have demonstrated vested interest in the search, uh, who they think may, may do well in this process, and be willing to give of their time for a process like this. Uh, so that's one, that's one way. Uh, but, but again, that's our recommendation. If you, if you all want to devise your benchmark committee in a different way, then the, the control is in your, in your hands, how you would like to construct that team.
Uh, Mr. Matto had to leave, but he asked me before he left, uh, if the council would consider, uh, not going out to the public. They, they've elected us to make this choice, and do this job, and I believe that wholeheartedly. And, uh, but he asked me to, to, to mention that, and then also, I'd like council to consider. I know Denise has already been, what do you call it? Not selected.
Voluntold.
Voluntold, that's the word. I look for, she was gonna serve, but I think that, uh, because of the experience with ECISD for all the years, and, and the way Gilbert served, Councilman Voska served the ECISD and Human Resources, I think he'd be valuable in that committee. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, uh, can I ask a clarifying question, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
So are you, is your recommendation, what is your recommendation of total number of members? For still the six members, so would that be, are you looking at five members with two council members, three department directors? What, what are you envisioning for?
I, I have a problem with, I have a problem with the six personally.
Okay.
With the six?
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be five, seven, but six, if, if you don't.
Cause they have an even number.
That's an even number.
So, Councilman Matto was basically saying that the council should serve as the committee, is that correct?
Yes, that is what he's saying.
Okay.
Uh, so, Councilman Thompson.
I, I agree.
You also, you also.
So that would be reflective of all seven council members, is, is that correct? Which is totally fine, and we can establish that.
Mayor, we just need to remember, if we're gonna do this, we need to do it in the open, so that there's no, uh, open meeting violation. Cause if you're all seven gonna serve, we're gonna have to.
When, when we come together, we have to post it.
Yes, so, but we can do that next Tuesday.
Yeah, and so then the process that, so in the process is that we would do it openly, and everybody would see it. So we would be doing, so every, if everyone wanted to come in here, they'd be sitting here suffering with us for an hour and a half to two hours. Yeah, I'm willing to spread the misery if anybody wants to come and join us, and if that way, we don't do it alone.
Well, just, just think about it, you've, you've got X number of people watching right through that camera right now. So that, that doesn't make any difference, that, that takes care of your citizens.
Yeah, that's true.
You have a lot of people watching right now.
Great, great. Okay, so do we have a consensus for us to be voluntary, voluntold ourselves, and for us to be serve as a committee?
That is what we gotta elect for.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
All right, so there, there, there's your benchmarking committee.
A clarifying question real quick, uh, Mr. Jones, is there any issue with conducting that here and video conferencing in Susie to help facilitate? I can also be here, he can be here, whenever we're.
I'll be traveling.
Well, let me, let me ask a question in that. The governor has suspended all the types of Zoom as far as, uh, with the COVID, where we don't, you don't have to see the face, is that true? Or does that still intact?
I would prefer to check on that before I gave you an answer.
Yeah, let's do that.
So that we're clear.
Yeah, because there was a time where, you know, whoever is presenting and speaking, and, and then resuming, our faces have to be shown, those that are also participating, their faces has to be shown, and be shown for everybody in attendance, and so, but I don't know if they suspended that, so we need to check on that.
I would much rather check on that, right, and.
But it's not something we haven't done.
Yeah, yeah, but the thing is.
But it was during COVID that we, that we were doing all that.
Well, I understand, but we have the capability.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, do we still have the capability to do that?
I hope so.
Yeah, we, let's check, because, uh, you know, we have to check with that, what IT people we have.
Well, the, the council meeting would certainly be open, and everyone would be present, but, um, she, she's in Georgia. Uh, so that's going to be a, a struggle. Uh, and we, all along, were thinking that these meetings, if the committee was structured in the way that it was, and it didn't have to be open because of that, would be conducted virtually. However, um, that's just the only thing that I'm, I'm bringing up.
We can do it virtually, yeah, we just, we just need to check for those little, little things that, you know, I don't know if the governor pulled it back.
Just to make sure we're.
Just to make sure we're, we're, we're legal.
Hundred percent.
And it's real simple, it's just a matter of placing the monitor where that person can be seen.
Well, and, and two, as you go through, if you are going to Zoom in that individual, your screen there, you, it can actually project where you can see all persons as a speak, and that allows you through your camera system, as Mr. Thompson alluded to, they would have full view of who's speaking, who's in attendance, et cetera, et cetera.
And if Mr. Jones checks, and the governor's suspended, then we're good?
Great, great. Uh, could we confirm that, uh?
Yeah, soon as I find out, I'll let you know.
Asap, great.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start right here with Mr. Andrew, you have any questions on the, um, pathway for positive change? The, 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 the whole process, the, any slides, anything you want to go back over, any questions?
I'm really pushing on getting this, this manual put together. I think this is number one, before anything else in this world. This manual needs to be put together before we do anything. Um, it's just leaving too much open out here. It's leaving people to make their own decisions based. It's leaving people to make their own decisions based on whatever they've heard. And so it doesn't need to be on what they heard, it needs to be on what they see and what policy is, period.
And Mr. Haney, that process is started and Mr. Hurst can speak to it.
Mr. Hurst, you know, can, can you tell us we're in the process, are you that, and, and answer that question, please?
Yes, our consultant that these folks identified for us is gentleman I can testify I've worked with for the past 10 years or so. Uh, he has a copy of our administrative procedures manual, also has a copy of our policy and procedures manual. I will be with him in a training session on Thursday, he's anticipating having a draft. We've already engaged him to conduct this.
Do you, you know the gentleman?
Yes.
And you've worked previously with him?
We have. Uh, we have brought him to the area to speak to local businesses before as part of the Human Resources Group. I've also conducted, uh, trainings with him in the past.
Okay. Mr. Hurst, let me ask you, just strictly your opinion, I'm not gonna hold you to it and nobody's gonna tar and feather you for your answers. Typically, you've worked in other, other leagues, I, I don't know what your resume is, I don't know what your experience is, but I, I think you are ex-Navy, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm sure it's very extensive. Is it normal for a, an entity, whether it's a city or a corporation of this size, to go that far without constantly reviewing and updating their personnel policies as we have done in 2008?
No, sir, it's not.
And so have you, you did, so let me ask you this once again, you, you've worked for the city of Odessa how long?
For about two years now, sir.
Two years. And so did you ever, um, mention this, that this was problematic? Did you ever, were you ever instructed to look at it? Did you ever try to implement any type of training procedures that pertain to our, uh, personnel policy? Uh, and also bring it up to, uh, for the leadership in the council in the past to be able to say, hey, look, this is something that we need to look at?
That has been discussed, sir.
It had been discussed in the past.
Yes, sir.
And so basically, it was, it was received, but there was no action.
It was not brought to council.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate for those, those questions. Uh, Mr. Haney, does that answer your question as far as where we're at on that process?
I just, right now is videos, putting videos out, letting it, you know, just anything to get stuff started, even before you have a manual in place, there are videos that are made to cover this stuff right now so that we can get these in their hands and part of our, our deal is, is to get people rolling now, not tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
I mean, not, not yesterday to tomorrow.
So what, once a manual's put together, we're going to see, uh, the employees go through a training process?
Yes, sir. Uh, generally, the way that works with the Marachi group is they will, after they finish the manual, then they will develop a specific training process to help us reset the clock. They will bring in a customized version of the training. Uh, they will be able to do that for our department directors and then bring that to the rest of the organization. As part of the quote, "In order to develop the policy and procedure manual," he is developing the slide deck that we would put out for our employees.
Okay, so there's no way that they're gonna, they can press play and then walk away and then come back?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, no, sir, the tech has actually moved past that now.
Okay.
It requires engagement.
Okay.
Uh, with regard to the training question, uh, we have looked at another provider that can provide some more specific training on harassment issues, things of that nature. Uh, we have the pricing on that today, uh, that money is budgeted and I received the approval to move forward with that.
So I, I came from the other side and this was very important to everybody that was in the oilfield. This training was bar none, you did this training or you didn't, you didn't come to work.
Yes, sir, this is not an optional training.
So I would, that's the only way this needs to be done. It's either you do it or you, you, until it's done, you don't start. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Condon?
I do, just to, um, explain, um, seasonally, I'm involved in, um, testing in the schools and I wanted to touch a little more on the assessments. Uh, if you look at TTISI, this is where the information that I received this, just studying, because I was interested in the assessments and looking into, um, TTI, which is a creator of the assessments. Who uses these assessments? Pretty big names, a lot of small companies too, but I saw American Express, I saw Pepsi, I saw Mercedes-Benz, I saw Volvo, GE, Deloitte. Pretty impressive. What caught my eye was the assessments aligned with the APA, American Psychological Association methodology for testing. That's huge. And I'll, I'll touch on that in just a moment or two. But back to 1984, TTI has provided an industrial eating suite of behavioral assessment tools that, this is what I like. Increase employee productivity, improve culture, and employee engagement. The TTI assessment creates a cohesion in the workplace, I'm liking that. Makes, I've summarized this down, you can tell I've summarized this down to the essence. Makes performance management, employee evaluation, and employee development easy.
Councilman Condon, we're being advised that we're getting off topic.
Okay, okay.
So we need to go ahead and wrap up.
I thought this was, very well.
Well, the lawyers are basically saying they're keeping us in the lane, so we, I need to reel you back in.
Very good, very good.
Very informative information.
Impressive, it's impressive.
Uh, Councilman Thompson?
Uh, I don't, I don't really have anything. I just need the, the process, you be able to stick to the process, the timeline you gave us last week? That is our goal, sir, is, and that's what we're pressing for, that's why we're looking to get this benchmarking session kicked off, no later than next week if we can. So, uh, so that we can get the job description to you because you guys, uh, you all need to review the job description and codify it. I think it's been about 20 years, if I'm not mistaken, since the last revision. So we'll need to engage, uh, Charles and we'll need to engage, uh, engage Mr. Jones on making sure that we bring a, a good solid job description to you.
And then we need to go ahead and then, uh, get with the city secretary so we can come up with the dates, we can, uh, post it and then get in here.
We will, we will reach back out at that in the next day or two, as soon as we find out all the details.
And Councilman Swan? Councilmember Swan, I apologize.
No, I'm good, I'm just, I'm ready to get this process going, I'm like, um, the other councilmen. We need to get these policy and pre, procedures, um, in place. I was a little bit disappointed to see that we haven't looked at this since 2008. I don't know why, but I'm, I'm ready for these policy and procedures to be in place. I mean, I know that, I mean, actually, we're running a business here, people don't, don't view us all as running a business, but your policy and procedures cannot be out of date for 2008. I mean, even if you do a revision and say they're okay, they haven't been looked at and they need to be looked at.
Gentlemen, anything else you want to add on this?
It's been our pleasure to provide you with this information and there is a lot of, there's a lot of negative, obviously, there's a lot of concern. But as we have really tried to reiterate, you got fantastic people in this city, fantastic employees. They just need some guidance, um, with updated policies and procedures and some updated training. Uh, and we're, we're super excited to move forward into the next process, part of the process.
Ab, absolutely, and just to let, uh, council know that if we're able to hold the benchmarking next week, um, Micah will be attending that along with, um, Susie Price. Uh, but of course, I'll be available via phone or email if you guys need me.
Let me, let me ask you one last question, because I, I should have asked it, but, um, in the process where you're going through and we've started seeing the, I think, the racial harassment and the numbers and sexual harassment. You know, this is something that hasn't manifested.
Mayor.
We can't ask that question?
You're getting off, we were, we were already on number three.
Okay, so you know what, let's just wrap it up, seeing that there is no more business before the city council.
But you need to make a motion to appoint yourself.
Okay, so here's this, so here's the one item, item two, there's just a lot to process.
And number three.
So we're on, um, item three discussing, consider the appointment of the city manager benchmark committee members. City council has discussed item two, appoint the city council, uh, the seven members of the council, uh, as the manager's benchmark committee. Do I have a motion in favor of that?
I have a motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Haney, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swan, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero. Um, mark the absence of, uh, Mark Matto, that he had gone to another, uh, committee meeting. Any, any other, any other questions, any other comments, any other direction? Okay, we're on item four, seeing that there is no more business before the city council, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed against, indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously, six to zero with one answer, we are adjourned.